And with that, we will move into what is going to be a very exciting presentation. This is to open the nineteen sixty-four time capsule from the former admin building at six fifty-one Pine Street, meaning the items in it are fifty-eight years old. And we will then move on to accept materials from each member of the board. I understand that departments and others have made contributions to the time capsule that will be, I hate this word, entombed, but I guess that's the word, uh, in this building to be opened in twenty seventy-two. Expect us all to be here that day. This, and this will be given by, uh, Mr. Angstrad.
Okay, good. Mic's on, you can hear me. Perfect. So yes, as Chairman Shoff said.
That's it?
This is it. So in, uh, September twenty-sixth nineteen sixty-four, they had a dedication ceremony for the tower. And of course, it's appropriate, we're opening it because we're in the process of demolishing the tower, as you can occasionally hear in the background, if you're here at the, at the chambers. Um, we, we were able to find it, um, in the courtyard of the old complex. Um, we've, uh, rescued it from its concrete vault. And it has not been opened by me or anyone else that I know of. People could have snuck into my office, but, um, until today, so. Without further ado, I'll open it up and we'll see what we have.
Camera open first before you da-da-da-da. Okay, there we go.
All right. So we have a letter from the Johnny Miller Travel Bureau, to whom it may concern, which we could open up, and then, uh, City Martinez, predictions for the city of Martinez. The nineteen sixty-four annual report from the, uh, Contra Costa County. Very thin.
And compared to today's.
All of the emergency numbers for fire, police, as well as the, uh, for the county.
Are they five number digit, uh, five number, five-digit phone numbers, or are they actually?
No, they're, they're, they're seven.
Okay, now.
They are seven.
Back in nineteen. Probably four-one-five area code.
I, I grew up with five-digit phone numbers.
Four-one-five?
Yeah, yep, four-one-five, absolutely.
I do, we all remember that because we stepped.
Another copy of the nineteen sixty-four annual report. A picture of the building, building maintenance department staff.
Looks like these things have held up very well.
Yes, they have. Because again, it was in this cardboard box and there was a, a, a large bag of silica gel on top of it, and that was all the preservation.
A baggie, just in case.
Uh, the Contra Costa County Offices Telephone Directory from July nineteen sixty-five. So. And instructions on how to operate your push-button telephone, your new push-button telephone. And then we have a copy of the photo of Contra Costa's first courthouse, built in eighteen fifty-five and demolished in nineteen oh-three, so. The, uh, metal has rusted away. But this was. Well. Yeah, the photo did not survive very well, unfortunately, so. Copy of the special edition on the administration building dedication from the Morning News Gazette, September twenty-fifth nineteen sixty-four. And obviously, we will open these up and then put them on display. The invitation and program for the administration building dedication, they're all sealed, so I don't want to rip them up.
Be displayed in the new building when it's completed along.
Right, we'll have a, we have a history wall there where we'll have these. The Martinez Area Chamber of Commerce letter. I will. If you'd like. Something from the, uh, city clerk, city of Antioch. It says Gene Fesba. Uh, something from the city of Walnut Creek. It's a letter from, uh, Joseph McBrien, who was the, uh, county administrator at the time the building was built. We can, um, I can probably read that too, if you'd like. Just an inventory of some of the items, a letter from the city of El Cerrito. Uh, Leo Armstrong Mayor. Frank Cortese, council member, Gordon Langwa, councilman, James Doherty, and Roy Messbel. City of Clayton, so it looks like they've got contributions from most of the. A proclamation from city Walnut Creek. Uh, city of San Pablo, uh, from Mayor Thomas Burns. County dedication, for, it doesn't say what's that, so, to explore further. City of Richmond, George Carroll Mayor. Contra Costa Development Association. A highway map. Uh, an industrial survey, it's mother, uh, correspondence from the Development Association. From the city of Pinole, but no indication of what's in there. Not sure what that is, it just has a name on the front. It looks like the final item is. Some pictures, we'll see if they survived. So a copy of the dedication program from. A photo, sort of, uh, aerial photo.
I'm surprised there's no photo of the Board of Supervisors.
There may be, there was one that was pretty damaged.
Oh, that's right.
This looks like a view from the top of the tower of the dedication ceremony.
Well, since our photos are all in the cloud, we'll put a, we'll, we'll still put a physical photo in the new one, but we'll put a thumb drive too.
Uh, here, here is a photo of the old board chamber, which you'll all remember, because it looks very much like it was. From when it was first put into action. And then we have a map. Nation pamphlets and a well. You see what's at the top there, reporting on the local, uh, high school team. But. But yeah, so the, 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 the paper from the, the day before the dedication ceremony. So let's see, have, you wanted to see.
Martinez predicts.
The predictions for the city of Martinez. The predictions for the city of Martinez, the long-range general plan, which has been adopted to guide the future development of the Martinez Planning Area, was necessarily based upon projections of future growth and characteristics of the citizenry. These growth prospects were based in consideration of the rapid expansion now taking place in the county as a whole. An evaluation of present population densities coupled with a calculation of the population holding capacity of the remaining developable land. And the impact of future freeway development in the area. The geographical areas to which these estimates relate differ somewhat from the present city limits of Martinez, so as to eliminate the vagaries of the ever-changing boundary line and establish a firmer base for prediction purposes. For this reason, the projections herein contain relate to the areas within Census Trac sixteen through twenty-one, as delineated by the U.S. Bureau of Census in nineteen sixty. So the nineteen sixty census for Martinez was twenty thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight folks. And their projection for nineteen eighty was from a low of thirty-six thousand nine hundred to a high of fifty-five thousand, so those are, that's within the range, what I understand. Um, their school enrollment numbers, they projected between ten thousand and fifteen thousand. Employment numbers between eleven thousand and sixteen thousand. Per capita incomes. They were estimating that total personal income would be between a hundred and sixteen thousand and a hundred and seventy-three thousand. Not sure exactly, you know, they, they don't have any details in there about what those would be. Automobile ownership projections were between nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine thirty for Martinez. Imagine it's probably on the upper end of that. Yeah. Yeah.
These were projections for nineteen eighty. Did they think the building would be obsolete by nineteen eighty, or that would be breaking into the time capsule at that time?
Well, that's about as far as they were willing to go for that.
Wow.
Let's see if they had any others. No, um, I think the other thing that might be worth reading would be, um, the CAO's letter. If I can find where I put that again, sorry. So this is the letter from Joseph McBrien, the CAO. The new county administration building fulfills space needs which have existed for a long time, and which have hitherto been met by renting space in a diversity of separate locations. The new structure is functional in that it permits grouping of departments which have related responsibilities, and which require space close to one another to permit rapid interdepartmental communications and conferences. The arrangement is conducive to improved public service. The financing plan used to pay for the structure, lease with option to purchase, through the crop, excuse me, through the cooperation of the Contra Costa Employees Retirement Association, requires payments which on the average over the life of the lease be equivalent to one cent of the county tax rate, presuming a normal upward trend in assessed valuation. It is not expected that the payments will result in a tax rate increase for present or future taxpayers. The building is part of the overall county civic center plan, which includes provisions for additional courts, a new jail and other offices. In the total picture, the new building will be blended architecturally with existing older structures and additional new structures to form a pleasing complex aesthetically, and to form a functional layout which county services can be rendered most effectively. In its proportions, the new building is imposing, but its real significance is that the Board of Supervisors is looking ahead to meet the requirements of the future in a county which now undoubtedly has already reached the five hundred thousand population level.
It's interesting to note, this is pre-prop thirteen, so the Board of Supervisors did set the tax rate every year. Um, so that's interesting to hear when he's talking about that, and we, Sisera, were, they were thinking about it back then.
And so in, on the back, they have some projections too, out to the year nineteen eighty-five, in which they, uh, projected the population of the county would be at a million in nineteen eighty-five, with an assessed valuation of two-point-five billion. So, I don't know, historically, whether we passed those numbers before or after that, but that was their projections for the building. So, at, at this point, I think, you know, we transition over to the new, unless there's anything else, we can play, well, as we clean these materials up, and we'll make them available, um, we can photograph them, inventory them, put them up on the website for people to, to, to look at, scan what we can scan, and then obviously, we'll have a, a, a chance to have a display of some or all of the items on a rotating basis in the new building that we're constructing where the tower used to stand.
Well, thank you, that, that was exciting. I thought there'd be more, so, in a way, that's good, because it is fifty-eight years ago. Somebody on the board wasn't even born then.
Me. I, I was.
Um, and that will allow us to get to, uh, what we're going to put in now. Um, I know the board members are just going to make a, a comment, but Mr. Angstrad, could you talk about what else is in, going into, uh, the time capsule that will be placed in this building?
Certainly, so we, we, in the same way, we constructed a concrete vault as part of the building, and we're going to collect the materials, uh, we've collected materials from most of the departments already, they've already filled up a, uh, container this size, I have it packed up in my office. We're going to accept the supervisors' materials, um, we'll add the proclamation when finished, and the CAO's materials, um, you know, and a copy of the current budget, which is much thicker. Um, with all, our current budget will almost take up this, this box alone. Uh, and then we will place them in the vault, which is sort of under the planter area out there, um, so it's fully concrete lined, and we'll put in, you know, preservation materials, um, seal up the boxes, and place them in that, um, next, probably early next week, because I have to get Public Works over to help me do it.
Well, and we didn't take a board photo this year, which is fine, because we were still in COVID, but I think if you go back to the twenty eighteen, um, that'll reflect. I don't care who reflects the board, uh, chair, so if you want to take the one, did we do one for you? Uh, in twenty.
I think mine was the last to be pre-COVID, I think was the last time we did a formal board portrait.
Let's just make sure one photo of the board, of the current board goes in. All right, well, thank you for that, and, um, I'm going to start by district, District One Supervisor.
Why don't we start with District Five? I don't, you don't have to always start with one.
You don't want to start?
Even, all right, you want me to?
I'll start with Supervisor, who would like to start? All right, I'm going to be the teacher, Supervisor Julia.
Okay, great. So, um, I, I decided to, um, place some items that were representative of what is happening today in our county and really in our, um, in our society generally, because what we do is, um, really, uh, impacted so much by what's going on, uh, on our planet and in our country, so. And I did, um, I did include a very short note, which sort of ties together some of the items I put in here, and I'll, I'll start by reading the note. Um, I handwrote a note on county letterhead. And again, you'll, you'll get the, um, the tie together of these items as I read them. And my note is very simple. We faced enormous challenges. We persevered. We had faith in our young people and future leaders to protect and fight for our future. We know you will have the wisdom and the will to continue the fight for our planet and our communities. So that was my note. Um, and, um, the items in the box. Starting off, as they, as the son of a high school civics and history teacher, I think history is important, and I have a CD, which is Introduction to the Contra Costa Historical Society. And I posted a note that says, remember and learn from our history. Um, I included, how can we not acknowledge the challenges of COVID? And I included a mask and, and at-home, at-home test kit, with a note, we protected ourselves and our neighbors. Um, we are a, uh, county that, um, encircles the bay. So I included a San Francisco Bay Trail map that shows both the completed and planned segments for the Bay Trail with a note, we hope and envision the trail will be completed. Um, so, fifty years. Uh, I included, to recognize our history and the land we occupied, I included a T-shirt. Uh, Richmond, California Fifth Annual Indigenous Walk with a note, uh, honor our ancestors. Yeah, I will, it back. Knowing also that we are, again, a shoreline county with all the challenges we face. And I have been involved in a coastal cleanup day for the last thirty-two years, and Diane has as well in her part of the county, and um, there, there are all the challenges of plastic on our, on our shorelines and of sea level rise and all those issues. And so a T-shirt from a, from one of the coastal cleanups that says, the beach could use some love. And California Coastal Cleanup Day, and this is from twenty fifteen. Um, since a lot of the work we do is, um, regarding making our shoreline, our air, our environment, um, resilient and addressing short, uh, uh, climate change, I did include Al Gore's book, An Inconvenient Truth. Recognizing the challenges that we have faced. Um, a pin, that's, and since we did declare this, racism is a public health crisis. We did do a resolution on that, this happens to be a Kaiser Permanente pin. Um, and finally, um, since I went to El Cerrito High School, this is a pin, um, from El Cerrito High School has now been rebuilt, but it has a depiction of the original El Cerrito High School that says nineteen forty-one to two thousand and five. Um, and, um, recognizing our education and our roots, so a pin from El Cerrito High School. And again, I think for me, the letter tied together that these are all challenges that we faced, but we are optimistic about the future with young people and, and that new generation of leaders to continue to make our community, um, a strong place.
Thank you, that will be very informative to them, as will all of ours, Supervisor Anderson.
Yes, and I, I don't have, is, I feel a little bit like we're doing show and tell, which I have not done for a really long time. Um, in my box, I invited all of the cities in my district to send a letter with, accompanied by a picture of their city council, to talk a little bit about their city, their population, their budget, and sort of what, what they anticipate going forward in the future. Um, so I have those, I also wrote a rather long letter, and I'm not going to read the whole letter, just sort of describing my role as a county supervisor, the priorities, the issues that we are confronting, I included my biography, I included business cards, I included a little card that we use in our district, information about what our district is, and then I included our holiday card, which includes a picture of my staff, because they are such an integral part of what we do in serving the community, I wanted people to know who they were as well. And really, um, beyond that, I have these wonderful letters from the town of Maraga, from the city of Waffiet, um, from the city, or the town of Danville, city of San Ramon, city of Arinda. And then, including, we, I did have Blackhawk gave me a copy of their bulletin and their Blackhawk Community Association. And then I included pictures of our Alamo Mac, the one municipal advisory council that, um, that we have, although we do have a Diablo Service Council, and then a list of those who were serving on committees in my district. The other thing I did include is I'm often out speaking to the community, doing PowerPoint presentations. So I gave a abbreviated version of the most recent PowerPoint presentation, which gives a summary of everything from our budget to issues confronting the county. And that is what is in my time capsule.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Burgis.
So, I Googled, what do you put in a time capsule? No, I really didn't, I wish I had. Um, you know, this is, this is a moment when you get to talk to people in the future, and you kind of think, well, what is it? And I was thinking about the fact that the capsule that we were opening today was set up a year before I was born. And how, at that time, there was so much turbulence going on in the, in the world at that time. And how things, as much as they've changed, haven't necessarily changed, and I just, it made me feel very philosophical and introspective. When I wrote, uh, my letter, I, uh, addressed the current situation in District Three, the county and the world. I gave a background on District Three and Far East County and shared my priorities and initiatives occurring in twenty twenty-two. And I closed that letter with a message to my future loved ones, because I could. And I just sent my love and encouraged people to continue to, um, give and, um, serve to make the world a better place. Because we all have to be optimistic and, um, look forward to the progress that'll go on in the world. We included a bio and photo of myself and my amazing staff, because it's teamwork. Uh, we invited folks from the three cities and the unincorporated areas, and we got uh, items from Antioch, Bethel Island, Brentwood, Byron, Discovery Bay, Knightson, and Oakley. I thought it was important to include the East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy Program, because we are preserving so much open space. And it'll be interesting to see what, you know, what comes at that time, and they'll see what we started with, what we had gotten to at this point, and then they will be hopefully enjoying that open space at that time. I also included a product that's probably what, I don't know, fifteen, ten years old, uh, the historical ecology of East Contra Costa. I think history is always interesting, and, uh, if that's something that gets lost, um, at least folks will get to see it again. I included Harvest Time U-Pick maps, um, recent editions of local papers. I included some of the, uh, Delta County Coalition, uh, stuff for protecting the Delta. I, uh, took the most recent mailer for, um, groceries and furniture and all of those kind of things, and stuck that in there. And I also included a, um, brochure from something that I participated in, uh, la- la- this week, last week. Uh, it was the Future of Diablo Valley Conference, which focused on aviation technology and biotech, so these are all, um, things that tell the world what we were thinking about right now. And, um, it was a really nice thing, I think we should all kind of think about what we're sending to the future on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Glover.
Thank you, this was, uh, definitely an opportunity to do some reflection on where the county has been in the last, uh, decade or so. And, um, so I included some history in terms of myself and the fact that I am the first African-American to be a part of the Board of Supervisor, and at that time, it's a hundred and fifty-year history. Um, I included some things, really, uh, a lot on transportation and where we have been with Highway Four and the widening of Highway Four, uh, BART coming into our, our system, our county. Um, and E-BART, because those were very big, significant things. Also happening within the history, um, was, uh, Los Manos College, the community college districts, and the opening of those particular, um, colleges. Uh, we also included in there some of the things around refineries and where they have been through our industrial safety ordinance, and the fact that refineries now are looking at, um, renewables and, um, curving the carp, uh, the carbon footprint within the county. I also included some things in there about what we've done with domestic violence, with the, with our Zero Tolerance Initiative. Um, what has happened with the, um, electrification of housing through our Sustainability Committee, and, um, moving from, from gas to, uh, and, um, moving from, from gas to, uh, electrical. Speak a little bit about what has taken place with, um, the Office of, um, racial equity, social justice and where that is. So we have a lot of documentations on things that have been, that's happened, talked about COVID and, um, what has happened with with COVID. Um, talked about the work that we've done with, uh, youth through the youth summits that that we've had down through the years. And pins of the particular cities in which, um, has been a part of the district. All in all, there's some analogy also about pathways and which doors has opened so that we could have, um, an opportunity to reflect back on where we will be, um, when this capsule is open and where we've been since then. So there's a lot of good information, a lot of brochures that that's in here from various local and regional agencies that operate. We have, um, a small bus, the Tri- I dealt to transit and its history, its pathway um, for our future. So just, uh, a lot of things that gives a historical analysis of where we are today and what our future plans are.
Thank you. And, um, there are four cities in my district. Uh, so I have letters from each of the cities, uh, photos of their council members. Um, for Walnut Creek, uh, they've included, uh, information regarding the Lesser Center for the Arts, which is a, a regional um, amenity for all of us. Um, I I have a mask also from the city of Walnut Creek. Uh, they all, all cities provided their pins, which is helpful, and Clayton provided a pin also. Um, so, uh, Pleasant Hill provided some very unique things. They have a stamp from, um, the library opening. So, um, took us fifty years to get the one we just opened. So when they, uh, are looking at this in fifty years, uh, hopefully they will only have had to remodel. Uh, this, uh, actually is a charger from the city of Pleasant Hill, which I think is interesting because, um, it will reflect what dinosaurs we are today compared to what it will be like in in twenty seventy-two. Um, Pleasant Hill also included, uh, their motto is we're at the center of everything and they have some decals about diversity. Um, so I, this is all being placed in here. Uh, I'm not gonna read all of my letter, but, um, when our P I O does the press release on this today, if, uh, my colleagues would like, that we would attach a copy of each of our letters. I really don't want these going in a tomb and then nobody knowing what we said today. If you don't want to do it, that's fine. But I I think it, listening to my colleagues, it's very interesting what we've all had to say. And, um, I I just am gonna read a few things because I think they touch on what, uh, my colleagues have talked about, obviously mentioning the pandemic. Um, I I comment that, yeah, in all of our years of public service, we've never dealt with such a massive public uh, or health policy issue. Obviously, the last pandemic was, uh, the Spanish Flu, uh, uh, back in nineteen, uh, eighteen. Um, I do talk about how distressing it was to serve as an elected official during that time and how distressing and disturbing it was for our staff. Um, but, uh, the the pride I had um, in in the majority of the citizens stepping up and following those public health orders. I talk about our national politics, uh, in terms of the divide, uh, not in terms of partisan politics. Uh, with my hope and my wish that fifty years from now we will have returned to a time, uh, when people were more respectful, more courteous, more understanding of different points of view. I do mention, uh, the major issues I see facing Contra Costa County, which are the Delta transportation. I mentioned Gomentum Station, um, housing. And again, um, public service and my concern that we, um, that members of the public are not stepping forward, uh, to serve even either in advisory or elected office because of the tenor, uh, of of recent years and the fact and hope that, uh, in the future that will have changed. Um, I talk about the current district and I wish to my successors that they have enjoyed so, serving District Four as much as I have, and it has been such an honor and a privilege. And I close with my thanks to all public servants, whether you're in elected office, appointed office or staff of our county and our cities, because they keep government working and government serves the public. You are all my heroes and my sheros. And with that, do you think I need it in a baggie or this will be sealed without? Okay, I could put it in a baggie and people would wonder what's a baggie? So, um, with that, uh, we, uh, can open this to public comments.
If there are any callers or Zoom participants who would like to speak on the time capsule presentation, please press pound two if you're on the phone or raise your hand in the Zoom app.
Uh, yes, thank you. It's interesting as, as all, although the time capsule is in regard to the county, it's obvious from global events that we are not, uh, isolated. We are part of a global community. In nineteen sixty-three, when John F. Kennedy was assassinated, there was basically a coup d'etat, which altered the course of this country. Apparently for the, uh, the tragedies which we are now seeing as we closed out disastrously the Afghanistan long-term war and opened up a new front in the Ukraine. So Supervisor Mitchoff, when you say government serves the public, I am in great disagreement with that opinion. Uh, as far as I can tell, you never missed a meal during the pandemic, which is a questionable lethality to anybody under the age of, uh, ninety. Yeah, there are so many issues that it looks like we're watching an episode from Idiocracy, the show twenty twenty-two. Um, you know, you guys are gonna have to face the truth pretty soon. We, you know, if you grew up thinking that Santa Claus is real and you're you're twenty-five years old, you're gonna have to acknowledge it when the magic money tree of Christmas stops working for you. It's not gonna work much longer. We're seeing it collapse and we're gonna all get a serious wake-up call. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Loreen. I'm promoting you to panelist. Please accept the invitation and unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Loreen Lober. I want to thank all the supervisors. I I thought you had very thoughtful, um, information, um, and things to put into the time capsules. And, uh, my supervisor is John Joya. Uh, I I especially liked, uh, what you wrote and there's just so many significant things that were put into this capsule. Um, and I I do appreciate all of you. Uh, I know it's got to be difficult, uh, hearing certain comments, uh, and I think it's a shame now. This is a real spirit here, I think, of community. This is the opportunity uh, to 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 do that. And then, you know, you're gonna still hear criticism, obviously. So I just want to support you and thank you very much. I do appreciate it. Look forward to seeing the photos to that, uh, from this time capsule. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Stephanie. I'm promoting you to panelist. Please accept the invitation and unmute yourself.
Yes, I also just want to thank the supervisors for taking the time and the thought to put together, um, you know, letters, meaningful letters, comments, uh, pictures of yourselves and your, of yourself and your staff. And I I appreciate, I especially appreciated the objects. The T-shirts, the pins, they, the charger, things that reflect what was going on um, right for us today in the county. And, um, I I also agree. I thought it, uh, I thought it, I thought they were lovely. I thought it was just really nice and I appreciate the work that you do and this, and this, that with all things, but with the thought with the, with this particular project. So thank you.
Any of the supervisors have any problem with constructive criticism? Or criticism, uh, that calls us out? Um, that is not what I was referring to. Um, but again, some view this as the con, as their ability to use a soapbox to air all grievances. And that's not what public comment is for. So, um, I think our last two speakers spoke right to the point of what item was on the agenda, and I thank them for that.